So can we table that?
Well, you want to table it?
No.
Right now you just remove an item from the consent agenda. Right, right. So you want to do it separately then?
Yes.
All right.
Because I have questions.
Okay. So just, just for the record everyone, for the meantime, I need a motion and a second to table item number F two A.
Second.
Roll call, madam clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee, trusty voucher, here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Mayor Rudez.
I am here. Let us please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Other side.
I have, thank you.
Is that, is that the minute?
No, okay.
Good, good evening. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Brooks. Second by Lewis.
What minutes?
There are no minutes attached in here?
No.
So is there a motion to table the minutes?
Yes, table. Did anybody else get any minutes?
Second.
I didn't get any minutes.
I thought I saw minutes in there.
I'll second.
You second to table?
Yes.
Okay. All right. This is a motion and a second to table. Motion by Lewis and it's, I mean by, and Lewis. To table. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee voucher.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Rudez.
Vote aye.
Okay.
All right, this public, does anyone have any public comments regarding to any items on the agenda? If not, we'll catch you on the rebound in a very few minutes.
There we go.
Thank you very much. Yes, does anybody have, any of the council members have anything that they would like to have removed or considered separately from the consent agenda? And wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, one second. There's a motion, I want to ask you guys to, to table item F two A.
Yes.
Item F two A.
F two A.
There has to be a public hearing for that first.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
F two G, I wasn't here for that. So can we table that?
Well, you want to table it?
Right now you just remove an item from the consent agenda.
Right, right. Right. So you want to do it separately then?
Yes.
All right.
Because I have questions.
Okay.
Okay.
So just, just for the record everyone, for the meantime, I need a motion and a second to table item number F two A.
Second.
Roll call, madam clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee voucher.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Rudez.
Vote aye.
All right. This is a motion and a second to table.
Motion by Lewis and it's, I mean by, and Lewis.
Okay.
To table. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee voucher.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Rudez.
Vote aye.
Okay.
All right, this public, does anyone have any public comments regarding to any items on the agenda? If not, we'll catch you on the rebound in a very few minutes.
There we go.
Thank you very much. Yes, does anybody have, any of the council members have anything that they would like to have removed or considered separately from the consent agenda? And wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, one second. There's a motion, I want to ask you guys to, to table item F two A.
Yes.
Item F two A.
F two A.
There has to be a public hearing for that first.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
F two G, I wasn't here for that. So can we table that?
Well, you want to table it?
Right, right.
Right. So you want to do it separately then?
Yes.
All right.
Because I have questions.
Okay. So just, just for the record everyone, for the meantime, I need a motion and a second to table item number F two A.
Second.
Roll call, madam clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee voucher.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Rudez.
Vote aye.
Also, on behalf of trustee Thompson, we're going to consider item F two G separately.
Outside of that, if no one else has any consideration, I'll ask for a motion and roll.
Yes, hold on.
You do have something?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So she said item G?
Two, item F two G, yes, ma'am.
F two G and F two E?
Item F two E.
So F two E and I think she said F two G.
She said G, yes, ma'am.
I saw trustee McFattie put it up. So I'm going to actually call her in at the time she walks in the door.
Yes, sir.
That was it? No, we know you were, you want item F two E?
E and G.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's.
I didn't understand, I thought you were still looking at it, I'm sorry. Okay, so outside of item F two E and F two G, is that it? Then if that's the case, we'll consider those items separately. I'll ask for a motion to vote for item F two A, F two B, F two C, F two D and F two F.
You table F, sir. No.
I mean, we tableed two A, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we are asking for a motion for items F two B, F two C, F two D, F two F.
As consent, right.
You want a motion, mayor?
Yeah, I need a motion, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thompson, second by Lewis. Roll call, madam clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee voucher.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Vote aye.
Mayor Rudez.
Aye, vote aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start off with item F two E, trustee voucher, this is the one that you asked for. We're going alphabetical order. Louis, yours, ma'am.
Okay, so for the resolution authorized the approval of the accounting software, civic systems. I know I still see that there was a reduction that was added in, but I really, so who all is supposed to be doing the training?
So the way I'm initially, depending on which module we're talking about, like for AP, the deputy clerk would be sitting in that training because she processes the AP building. Cash register seating, people at the front desk who handle in the cash register seating, the collective, they would be sitting in for those trainings. Depending on which training, but whoever uses the majority of the module, they'll be the ones sitting in for those trainings.
And for this training, they, the company will be coming here to do the training?
I've seen it both ways. So I've seen them do electronic training video and then I've also seen them do onsite training.
So what do we have, what do, what do we have scheduled?
We haven't scheduled any of the trainings yet, I believe.
I mean, what is the propose, is we doing?
We had it set up to be onsite training, in person.
In person here?
Yes.
Okay, so with, with the civic system, I understand, we did get the reduction, which was of five thousand dollars, it was reduced. But I really think that we should hold off on a county system until we have a finance director. So the finance director would be able to come in and understand exactly the training as well and be a part of the process and give input. So like a finance director and whatever additional, to me, senior staff accountant, I really think that we should have a finance director in place before we bring in a new system. This is to the village manager, it's not really to you, Chris.
So I've onboarded new software, accounting software before, and it takes a very long time. I think it was about nine months to a year. So we would have to get started just because of the voluminous paperwork and all the things that we would have to start to put in there. So if we started for first four months, we probably wouldn't still need a finance director just to upload the stuff. But it's, we can, we can put it off a few months, but it will take, like I said, nine months to a year to actually have the system up and running. But actually, inputting a lot of that information is going to be Chris, myself, it's not going to actually involve the staff to, you know, to turn over all that documentation. So we wouldn't even really at that point need a finance director.
Right, I mean, I understand we have Chris that's here, but to me, if we bring in any type of new accounting system, we should have that, exactly that director in place to be a part of the conversation, to be a part of the transition and also be a part of the training. That's my perspective, I don't know about the rest of the board.
Well, they can't add, they can't make any changes at this point.
Not to say they can add or make, it's just a part of the process and give their input. So we bring it in.
They can't really give much input because everything was, so it's kind of à la carte, you kind of build it out how you want it. So if someone were to come in now, this contract's already built out and it has every single nodule in it. So if they wanted to say change something or whatever, we'd actually probably have to go back and revise the contract. And it's literally like giving paperwork and all kinds of documents. We really don't need a finance director just to start that process, but I understand what you're saying.
So who, who would be managing the system here in the village for any type of issues or whatever comes up?
It wouldn't even be live, that's what I'm saying. We'd still have to, we would be turning in, turning over.
Right, I know you're turning in the process, but if, what, for instance, it takes, because it's been, what, two years? We've been looking, it's been more than two years really for a finance director. So we have no idea exactly when it's supposed to happen. Hopefully it's somebody soon, we didn't have one, but it was gone. So I'm just stating, that process could be complete before we even get somebody. Hopefully we'll have somebody, but the system should be managed by somebody. That's not something that you as a village manager should be managing. So that's why I'm saying, I feel that it should be a director in place when it has issues or who they need to reach out to, it should be reaching out to that person.
Actually, no, because a finance director wouldn't deal with the dog tags, a finance director wouldn't deal with code enforcement, documentation. So it's all these different departments working together. The finance is.
So like a finance director and whatever additional, to me, senior staff accountant, I really think that we should have a finance director in place before we bring in a new system. This is to the village manager, it's not really to you, Chris.
So I've onboarded new software, accounting software before, and it takes a very long time. I think it was about nine months to a year. So we would have to get started just because of the voluminous paperwork and all the things that we would have to start to put in there. So if we started for first four months, we probably wouldn't still need a finance director just to upload the stuff. But it's, we can, we can put it off a few months, but it will take, like I said, nine months to a year to actually have the system up and running. But actually, inputting a lot of that information is going to be Chris, myself. It's not going to actually involve the staff to, you know, to turn over all that documentation. So we wouldn't even really, at that point, need a finance director.
Right, I mean, I understand we have Chris that's here, but to me, if we bring in any type of new accounting system, we should have that, exactly that director in place to be a part of the conversation, to be a part of the transition and also be a part of the training. That's my perspective. I don't know about the rest of the board.
Well, they can't add, they can't make any changes at this point.
Not to say they can add or make, it's just a part of the process and give their input. So we bring it in.
They can't really give much input because everything was, so it's kind of à la carte. You kind of build it out how you want it. So if someone were to come in now, this contract's already built out and it has every single nodule in it. So if they wanted to, say, change something or whatever, we'd actually probably have to go back and revise the contract. And it's literally like giving paperwork and all kinds of documents. We really don't need a finance director just to start that process, but I understand what you're saying.
So who would be managing the system here in the village for any type of issues or whatever comes up?
It wouldn't even be live, that's what I'm saying. We'd still have to, we would be turning in, turning over.
Right, I know you're turning in the process, but if, for instance, it takes, because it's been, what, two years? We've been looking, it's been more than two years really for a finance director. So we have no idea exactly when it's supposed to happen. Hopefully, if somebody, soon, we didn't have one, but it was gone. So I'm just stating, that process could be complete before we even get somebody. Hopefully, we'll have somebody. But the system should be managed by somebody. That's not something that you, as a village manager, should be managing. So that's why I'm saying, I feel that it should be a director in place. When it has issues or who they need to reach out to, it should be reaching out to that person.
Actually, no, because a finance director wouldn't deal with the dog tags. A finance director wouldn't deal with code enforcement, documentation. So it's all these different departments working together. The finance is a big nodule of it, but it's actually much bigger than that. So like a village, a finance director wouldn't be needed for like the code enforcement aspect and different parts.
Right.
So even if we brought someone on today, they'd be sitting there. They wouldn't be doing some of this other stuff that, you know, would need to be turned in.
Which I understand the code enforcement, but the financial part is the biggest part because that's what you all was presenting, Chris, right? This is, just the whole thing is to get the whole finance system together. So we talk about finances. I wouldn't be expecting for Chris to be doing it because who's to say that we would keep them on for long? So I don't want it to be where he's the one that's managing it and keeping track of what's going on with the finances versus we have an actual department head to do that. So that's, that's my statement. That's up to what the rest of the board?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that as well. I don't think it should be levered on it because of what you said about how long it could take to get the system in. And even if we hire a finance director, that person may end up quitting or leaving and we still would have to train the new person. So I think it's good to have it already in place and, and get it ordered and do whatever we have to do now instead of waiting. Because like you said, we've been waiting for a finance director for over two years. We're not going to wait till you-know-what freezes over. We need to go ahead and move forward and get things in place so that we can move accordingly. That's just my take. That's why I didn't say the word. Because that ain't gonna never happen.
Well, it shouldn't take too long for, I'm just saying in general, for, I understand transition of systems, it does take, it take a while. But it also, we should have somebody that's going to be monitoring the system and not just have a system brand new brought in and we don't have anybody monitoring or if it's outside, outside accounting firm doing it, I don't think that that's what should be done.
They did say when they presented the system, if someone were to leave someday, if they would, most of the modules, they said, you can train them in an hour, two hours. A longer, bigger module like AP, general ledger, bigger financial, they go dedication, they can train whoever is a future person who's come through that situation.
Okay, with that being said, I think we should move forward with it. Because who knows when a finance, we had a finance director, she was here for a while and whatever happened with that. But I think we should move forward with the system so that way it is in place. Like you said, a module can teach them and the person or the company will come back and teach the people.
Yeah, yeah, that's my take.
May I be recognized?
Absolutely, sir. Go right ahead.
Yeah, Chris, this software, this is more, I, I know we always speaking of software, you know, no matter if it's dealing with email, you name it, but this one, this particular, this would deal specifically with the finance. Am I correct?
It's, yeah, a large portion of the module is for finance, accounting, general ledger, considerable, all those types of items.
Okay. Now, this software is, let me ask, because I've seen it as said, conversion. Computer software conversion services. Oh, that's just the name of it, right?
No, their name is Casell. Civic System Casell. The conversion is taking all of your guys' current accounting system and fund balance will be waxed into the next two years. And converting it into carrying that data and then into Casell.
Okay. So therefore, this software, you would be establishing the system of, say, I heard someone say inputs. So it would be, if you put in certain data, it would be more of an upgrade? I mean, help me a little bit if I'm
So what was going to happen is all of your guys' past data will be exported out of fund balance for X number of years and then imported into Casell. Moving forward, then all activity will be processed through Casell. So AP billing, invoices, all those things will go straight to the accounts of some general ledger, all that, all the activity will all be ran through Casell.
And if I'm not mistaken, isn't fun, fund balances like grossly outdated, our system or something? Am I correct with that?
Yes, I would say your system is very old and for the size of your municipality, you guys need a new system. It is not one of the best systems that I've worked with and for the size of your municipality, you guys need to change because it's a very old system. Like, so what happens is when a fiscal year ends, it can keep open one fiscal year. You guys are a few years behind on your audit. What that happens is any audit entries have to be posted off book. And then your current year, you need to update that off-book entries to reflect all the stuff that happens in the audit. So every year, all the transactions that were in '21, '22, et cetera, they need to be posted off of your accounting system because it's the only way that they can be reflected so that the auditors can start their work.
Okay.
Because Casell, we can post everything into the fiscal year and then move on. Give them the books, they do their work next year and the new entries posted into the books, move on, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Is this where, I think I just heard Manager Scott tell Trustee Foucher that the time, I guess we're so outdated that the time would be almost a year before we even, okay.
I've seen implementations take between six to nine months to a year. And it depends on which modules you have, which modules you want to build out. The longer, the bigger, the more complex the module, the longer it takes for implementation because you have to pull all of that data to give to Casell to, for Casell to import into your guys' new system. And now is the best time when you want to change, if you want to change processes and establish new controls, new procedures, with a new accounting software input is the best time to do it. And now that we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year, any changes you guys want to do for the future fiscal year, now is the best time because we're going into a new fiscal year. So even if we are magically can get it all up and running by May 1st, now is the best time that if you guys do want to make changes into how you guys operate your general ledger, your funds and those types of things, now is the best time because you're bringing in a whole new software to incorporate all those types of different changes.
Okay. And then one last question on, with the audits. How much longer would that take if we did switch to the system? You said it would be off books, but
Well, right now, what we have to do to get your stuff is I basically have to use my company audit software to create the trial balances that we can give to the auditors to start the work. So theoretically, if we can get it into your guys' system, it cuts me out of the process, so to speak, to an extent.
Right.
Which I gladly, because we can move a lot faster.
Right, 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 right. And, and I know you mentioned a number. The last time I seen something was 2020. Well, no, was it 2020? So we're talking almost, what, three, four years of audits?
Yep, and every year that you guys, so after every fiscal year, the current software allows you to keep it open for one fiscal year. But the night, the, the concept with that is when they say open, they mean that you can't post into the future fiscal year until you close out the previous year. So you can't post into '26 until you close '25.
No, we got to get it.
So if you want any activity in '25, you can't post your activity in '26, which means that financials and those types of things that would help you guys make decisions can't be created because we can't post the activity for '26 until '25 is closed.
Mr. Mayor, you have my turn.
All right, and the other question?
May I be recognized?
Go ahead.
Okay, I have a slightly technical question. So is this a cloud-based system?
Yes.
What's the backup?
They, Casell's your backup. They maintain it off, they maintain all of the IT infrastructure. We're going a little outside my IT knowledge base, but they maintain all of it on their clients, on their servers. It's your data. But they maintain it so that if something were to happen, it's stored on theirs. And realistically, they have better IT servers than you guys will. Because they, they invest more than you guys will. Just the nature of, that's what they're advertising as. So they're going to spend a lot more on IT than you guys will.
Okay. The one more small question is, so the audit process that'll cut you out, so it's going to be automated, is that what you're saying?
Well, now what will happen is instead of, so what the current process is, is all of the audit journal entries, they, the auditors give it to us, we now have to pass to all of your accruals. We have to keep offset entries that then we give and put, give to the auditors. Now what we'll be able to do is, once the audit is done, post them, all the accruals, post them to the books and then give the auditors so that way they don't have to go, okay, here's your entries, here's my entries and do, it will already be up there and done.
Automated.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, good.
Were you done, trustee?
Yeah.
So are you adding in code enforcement? It's one of the things I see that, before that wasn't. Are we adding that in?
You don't have it running.
I still see that that's on the optional module, but I don't, you have brought it up.
I don't think we, I think once we get, see what, how their implementation works, I would suggest you guys do move that into it. But I first want you guys to get the general ledger and those things set up because those are the high priority things that you guys need for finances. You need a better accounting system. Those are, once we get this done, then I would say you guys will incorporate that. So to me, this is your bigger, bigger thing is get the accounting software in place.
But it's not a part of it right now, but that is a module.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because it wasn't, but then y'all had brought it up, that code enforcement, so I didn't know if it was changed. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Anybody have any of their questions?
Yeah.
Oh, make a note along the time that Trustee McFadden goes. Welcome to Trustee. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's been kind of rough this evening. Thank you for your commitment. Awesome. All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
We don't have anything.
Need a motion, need a motion.
We need a motion. So move.
They had questions on it, so they wanted to have it considered separately, so now we want to have a motion and a second and see what we're going to do with that item F2.
E.
A resolution authorizing the approval of an agreement between the Village of University Park and Civic Systems for computer software conversion services.
So move.
Move by Lewis, second by Williams. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee McFadden. Trustee Foucher.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks. Mayor Rudez.
I concur.
Mayor Rudez.
Vote aye. Okay, this is item F2G, and this is a motion to approve the settlement agreement between Deborah Wilson and the Village of University Park. This is what Trustee Thompson wanted to have considered separately because she was not privileged to some of the information. Trustee, your floor.
But just may I interject, I'm not sure what, if it's something that can be talked about in open session. That's the concern that I have. So if we're
Mm-mm, I hope not.
I can't really ask.
Can it be, can it be moved to executive session?
You can discuss it in executive session, and since it's on the agenda, you can just motion to have it moved on the agenda to after executive session, if that's what the concern is. Yeah. I just, because of the nature of it, I don't think we should, we can talk about it in an open session.
Okay, mayor, can you call for the motion?
There's a motion. Is there a second? This is to go into an executive session.
This is to move it.
To move it to executive session.
After executive session. Move item, so you would just be moving item?
Move item F2G.
This is a motion to move item F2G into the later executive session.
Second by McFadden. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee.
This will be a quick one, though.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee McFadden. Trustee Foucher.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams.
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks. Mayor Rudez.
Vote aye, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
All right.
Motion passed.
New business bills payable attached for your approval is a listing of general operating expenses for the Village of, for the great Village of University Park that occurred on February 26, 2025 through March 25, 2025. General Fund 261, 562, and 96. Road and Bridge, 7,009, 15, and 31. Town Center Fund, 5,034, and 62. University Golf Club, 8,451, and 84. Capital Project Fund, 119, 351, and 82. Motor Fuel Fund, 34,058, and 96. Tiff 5, 462, and 50. Tiff 7, 1,0274, 50. Payroll Fund, 4,358, and 58, with a grand total of 442, 471, and 9 cents. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Move by Lewis.
Second.
Second by McFadden.
I have a question. I know you're waiting on
You're waiting on somebody. Question?
I have questions on the bills payable. I was trying to find, I didn't have the printout, but I can't remember which check number it is. But for the, we have one for Rogers Towing. And I see that we have an invoice for, why do we have an invoice? I thought the invoice is supposed to go to the, the actual owner of the car.
I believe that was for the street sweeper and it was for another vehicle. It was for someone from, I can't remember the vehicle.
It says for a Mitsubishi. So isn't, shouldn't, I thought based off when we got the towing company, that the invoices go to the actual owner of the car?
Right, this was in relation to a criminal investigation.
Okay.
It was sort of an outlier. It was one of those situations where we needed the car. And it was not trying to tell everything about the investigation.
Right, okay, that's fine.
It was where we needed the car, we had to get the car, we had to get the car.
Okay.
And that was your check number 113218.
That's fine. Yep, he told me, he gave me the answer for that. Thank you. The next one is for, thanks for checking that check number. It's the Stay Focus Media Group. Is this what this is, Stay Focus Media Group?
Yes, it's the same company that's been coming out even before I got here, that covered board meetings when the communications director wasn't able
Oh, so communication director's not able to do it. I didn't, I wasn't aware. Okay, so that's the company that's out. Okay, I just wasn't aware. I don't know if it was brought up last meeting, but I wasn't there, so, okay. And then it was, I think it's, and then the other one was question about the, the Police and Fire Commission Secretary. I, I think that's kind of the check for Marva Hampton that is $200 per meeting as the secretary. Where did we come up with that? Because the first time I'm seeing it is at the last bills payable. I wasn't here, but that's the first time I saw it, and this is the second time. And $200 is pretty high from my perspective, because when you look at it, $200 per meeting, that's about maybe 2,400 a year. And that's more than what the deputy clerk gets.
I think the two times, I think there were two separate checks that came out, but we have been meeting regularly because we are onboarding some, some officers, but whatever the board
So how did the amount come, where did the amount come from?
From what I understand, that was kind of a standard amount. The Fire and Police Commission approached me and they asked me about it and I told them that was fine. Sometimes they'll be in the meetings for a couple hours. They ask Marva to file things or to post stuff, so that was the amount and then I agreed.
Okay. I mean, I just, I just think like, because last month it was, they had two meetings. So that was, I think it was for $400 that she received or that person received, and then it was $200 for this meeting. So it's like basically for Police and Fire Commission, I'm guessing meets every month. So I was just basically looking at, and then if you add in a special meeting, that's even more. So I just don't understand how the Police and Fire Secretary, Police and Fire Commission Secretary, it's not the Police and Fire, but the Police and Fire Commission Committee Secretary gets more than what the deputy clerk receives. I think the deputy clerk does way more than the Police and Fire Commission Secretary. So I just really would like to look at that, that amount to be reevaluated.
We can absolutely discuss that.
Okay.
Trustee Williams, you got something to say?
I don't like to measure things and I can't say for sure that that person
I don't like to measure things, and I can't say for sure that that person is doing more than the other person. I do recall that one time we had a transit, a person that went to the transit meetings, and they were paid a hundred dollars. I don't know if they took notes or not, I'm sure they did, but it's pretty, it's pretty standard to give a person some type of stipend, and if it's, if they have more meetings than what we expect, then she's entitled to that pay.
I, I, I'm not saying that she doesn't, she's not entitled to receive something, I just said for the amount, when you look at the amount as in each person does, we don't have to compare, but the amount just came out of nowhere. I've been to the Police and Fire Commission meetings, and sometimes they'd be forty-five minutes. Um, so I'm just stating two hundred dollars is a lot for the secretary to do the things, and I don't even know what it all consists of, this is the first time I'm seeing it as of last bill payable, and now it's this bill payable, so where did it come from in the first place is the question. So I'm just stating that, yes, she should be compensated, that's why I said to, I think that the amount should be reevaluated, and it should be based off of something else, not just a number that was, I don't know where it came from. So that's what my statement was, and just as for the deputy clerk, we kept having all the issues with, oh, this is conflicting, she's doing two jobs, how does that work? But it was like easy to just add on another person who's getting an actual stipend as well, without taxes being taken out and everything.
It was, it was conflicting, and we did want to make sure duties were separated. We didn't want people doing, deputy clerk doing office hours, and then having to stay overtime to do their regular job, which I think may have happened in the past, so we're trying to make sure that that didn't happen again, so I think.
Same, same as this.
We covered it, but.
Right, because the, the Police and Fire Commission, they need at the police station, and this individual works in village halls, so that's not even where they actually work.
Right.
So that's all I'm stating as far as keeping up the records and everything. It's fine to be done, I, just like I said, I think that the amount should be reevaluated. If this is the amount that everybody wants, then that's fine, but it shouldn't be just all of a sudden, I'm just gonna pay this person two hundred dollars to come to this meeting to be a secretary, when you have a full board, uh, of the Police and Fire Commission.
And I agree, but she did mention that they said this is standard, so if that's standard, then I think we have to go along with that.
I didn't know where sta, that she said, she said, that's what was told to her, that it was standard. So I would like for the Police and Fire Commission to provide us with that information and say this is what the standard amount. That's all it's asking for. It's not a back and forth that's really needed, I just asked for us to reevaluate the amount. I didn't say pull the check or nothing, she did the work, so she get, of course she gets it, but I think it's something that we need to look at.
Yeah, mayor, mayor. Yeah. Um, if you want to ask anybody about it, I know it best. I sat up there as chair. Um, y- yes, I agree with the trustees that if someone does the work, you know, they should be compensated for it. Um, I think I did, uh, mention this last board meeting, so what I did was, is that, uh, when I went home, last board meeting, I grabbed the module book, Ms. Scott, if you want to. This is the book, and indeed, uh, once you take the class, you receive a letter from the University of Illinois, because that's where we went, and you receive the certification so you can take the secretarial minutes. What I did was, and this is what I hope the chairman, maybe he can take some advice from a former chairman. What I did was, is I approached the clerk and asked the clerk, can I have one of your deputy clerks, but it would be an hourly pay. Minimum four hours. And that's what was happening. So, what I hope the chairman is doing is that there's a budget that he's supposed to follow. That budget, if I'm not mistaken, uh, if anybody can help me, I think we had twelve, twelve thousand, right? For the Police and Fire Commission? It was supposed to be capped at twelve thousand. So if it's at twelve thousand, um, I took pride in, in which it goes back to show how long I was the chairman, John Townsend was the village manager. Yeah, I took pride of coming back and saying, you know, madam village manager, this is how much dollars we spent. Half the time I did the secretarial minutes, but what I did was when Commissioner Greer, who is still there, is that sometimes I felt that the commissioners need to learn how to be commissioners, so what I would do, I would chair the meeting and allow, uh, the former, she's a former clerk now, but she would be in there for about four hours. If there was an executive session, and I, and we did have employee disciplinary issues, that's the only time that, that clerk wasn't in there, because we didn't want that information to come back to the village. The only person that should have known was the village manager at the point, at that point. So, I just asked that the chairman, what he does is that he take a look and make sure that he doesn't flow through his, his budget, and yes, that is true, if you're, if you're having one meeting each, each month, that's twenty-four hundred dollars. But my question come in, just make sure that when you're paying somebody that, if you're gonna have two, three meetings in which that does happen, I think at one point the Police and Fire Commission met six times, so that's six times, two, what, two hundred dollars? So the chairman should really be careful, because at that point, trustee Foucher, Louis, McFadden, even Williams, someone's gonna say, whoa, what are they doing over there? So you want to kind of use the best and wise decision on that. So I do have the documentation, I want Ms. Scott to see, to know what, what Ms. Hampton need, you know, because, you know, it, it does help to have someone there, and if someone wants to know what does a secretary does, actually, she, 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 if you're gonna use her, she's gonna be doing a lot of work.
Yeah, I want to know, because I think before in the past, I don't recall any of the secretaries having a certification.
No, no, and, and.
None of them, and this will be a first for this new secretary.
Yes.
I don't recall that being in the past, that anybody went to.
Yeah, so this, I don't think, uh, sec, uh, Chairman Martin has went to Module Seven yet, but I think most commissioners had all seven, uh, all seven modules. So this is why we're bumping into it. The secretary actually does a lot, trustee Louis, uh, they, of course, they keep the minutes of the meeting, they're the custodian of those, uh, records in the business of the board. Number three, they do perform other duties prescribed by the board members. And lastly, they shall be the keeper of the seal, in which, we really don't have one, we need to create one. Um, but it does say at the bottom, it does let it know that the secretary to the board, that some boards may want to employ a recording secretary in addition to the board secretary, and there is nothing in the state statute prohibiting that, and, you know, and of course, uh, Attorney Frazier can tell you that, you know. So, um, I think what's happening is that this board, the Police and Fire Commission wants to, probably want to move to having a secretary, and if they do, I think they should have that conversation with Ms. Scott so she can come back, you know, so he can come back to the board, and that is something that we can be okay with instead of seeing X amount of dollars on a, uh, bills payable. And I yield my time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other comments regarding that? No?
No, one more, other thing.
All right, I, I just want to say one thing. I'll just put all my trust and confidence in Professor Martin as the chairman. It's a learning curve as we move along, but as a man of great education and knowledge, so I'm quite sure he's capable of, uh, finding out some things, and it's all budget-friendly, so we want to make sure. So that's actually a, a whole separate entity that we really don't govern, so, just for the record. And it's mandatory by the state, so, and they're responsible for hiring all the police and fire officers, except the higher upper administration, so let's always encourage and lift each other up, and if there's something, let's try to build them up and see if we can add a hand to them, all right? Appreciate that, all right, go ahead, trustee.
Okay, I have a question again about this Thompson elevator inspection, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. Tell me again why we keep having a, an elevator inspection?
That was for, I want to say that wasn't for the inspection, it was for something else.
Can I? Uh, trustee, that is actually for code enforcement when they have inspections at other properties, it's not for us here. Oh, it's not for our police department? No. Okay. It's code enforcement doing inspections. Okay, but if it's at some other facility who has an elevator, why are we paying it? We send the inspectors as the village. Yes. So, so we pay to inspect a private property elevator.
This was in place when I got here.
That's state stuff, too.
Can we, can we, uh, can we, because, well, I, it was probably built, it's been almost two years, I.
I didn't look at that, and I, I was questioning some of those things.
So can we, so can we have some more information about how, how we're? Okay.
Trustee Louis.
Vote side.
Trustee McFadden. Trustee Foucher.
Vote side.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote side.
Trustee Williams.
Vote side.
Trustee Brooks. Trustee Brooks. Mayor Rudez.
Vote side.
Thank you. Bills will be paid.
All right. It's good to pay the bills. Um, Chris, would you pass over the public comments down, passing down the line, please? Thank you so much. Saria Jenkins? No one says I have to.
Good evening, mayor, board. Happy Women's Month again, we're at the end of our, our wonderful month that goes really twelve months a year as women, and I just wanted to say that as well. I wanted to ask a quick question, I've still been getting calls from the retirees, and this is not anything done for any political gain, let that be, let that be clear. Um, they haven't received their letters, and they need their letters for their documentation, and after it comes, I know that you'll get it out to them, but please, please, send it to them. A lot of them can't come out tonight, and they need those letters for their own personal records. And also, I would like to say to all the candidates, good luck, and see you on April first. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah Boyd, please.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
And Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
I just want to say, make some comments about, um, the election that's coming up. I would like to have received some information in the mail regarding some of these other candidates and what their stance are on things going on in the community, but I see, um, people are running for, uh, these positions and putting out no position papers. They're putting out lots of signs, so I guess signage is going to be the way the people vote. And I'm kind of disappointed with that, because I certainly would have liked to have known whose, uh, whose, whose stand is what. I may be supporting a candidate, but this is an opportunity to change my mind, too, you know? So I don't, I don't quite understand, it's disrespectful to the community to not put out a position paper of what you stand for. So I think the village has got, people have got to start making, uh, people accountable, demand more of them, uh, so they can come forth and say what they're going to do for this village. And I, this is Women's Month, and I'm just kind of disappointed to see some of the women not standing up strong like we black women have in the national arena. Um, not taking care of our community, um, not working together to solve problems together, but carving out positions for themselves and spots for themselves. I would just like to see the women on this board, some of these women, to do better, and stop voting aye, aye, aye for everything that's put on the table, question things. I just feel like it's for your own personal benefit, the reason why some of these people are not showing that they're really concerned about the village by not asking questions. Showing up at every meeting, never asking a question, but always voting aye.
Y'all ask a lot of questions.
And the final thing, I would like to see a Harriet Tubman here, and a Sojourner Truth in this here household with, among these women. So I'm just asking for you all to dig a little deeper, remember your history, where you came from, how you got here, and money is not going to help you, so you got to get some principles about yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tony Towns.
Good evening.
I am Tony Towns, I'm one of the plan commissioners here in University Park. And, um, I'm not gonna mention any names other than mine and Joe Rudez. I didn't vote for Joe Rudez, I didn't like Joe Rudez, I didn't care for Joe Rudez. He drive past my house, I used to throw rocks at his car.
That was you, huh?
Yeah, just, just, just call me Ernest T. Bass. I was, um, I was team former mayor all day. Joe Rudez came knocking on my door after he won the election, and had a bucket of rocks waiting on me. We had a conversation, and he asked me to, but I joined his, his board, and I told him I had to think about it. And I talked to the former mayor, one of the former mayors, and they thought it was a be a good idea, he ain't gonna get nothing over on you, because, you know, you know, it's, it's a lot of stuff out there about Joe Rudez, and I fell for some of it. But since then, about four, five years now, Mayor Rudez ain't never told me a lie. Not one. Not a half a lie. But I have learned that the Kool-Aid I was drinking with the tainted water had me a little confused about what to believe in this village. I could drink the water now because Joe don't clean it up. I could speak, I could drink the water now because Mr. Mayor Rudez has cleaned it up. Yeah, he cleaned it up, to my, in my opinion. So I say that to say, I was, um, I was a believer of some of the nonsense that, that gets pushed around this village. And then I learned, I've learned the facts, I learned it for myself. And I say that to say, we have candidates knocking on people's doors, and my door was one of them, telling straight blatant lies. Lies. And you got to know who the hell I am, and what door you knocking on, you can't come to my house and telling them lies. So you telling me them lies, and my wife them lies, well, just my wife ain't telling them to me. You telling everybody else these lies, too. I got a rain doorbell camera, I got three properties in this village. I got a bunch of friends in this village, I can make a very bad commercial for you. It's not just one. All I ask is run on what you gonna do, what you've done, and your character, and, and, and your plans. Don't, don't kick somebody else to, to, to bring yourself back up. And, uh, I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm so glad Mr. Towns came and he said that, because Ms. Towns, um, I had came, I did come to your house, and I said hello, your wife answered the door, said hello, and I left the literature and kept moving. and I said hello, your wife answered the door, said hello, and I left the literature and kept moving. One thing I do know is yes, the mayor appointed you to the planning commission. To me, this is how I feel, and I'm glad you got up and you said what you said, because there is a lot of that in this town. The one thing that I hate is negativity and negativity mailings. And this is the period that it usually come out, and I'm going to stand and agree with you. Because one thing that I knew when I knocked on your door is that I didn't have to go there that with you, that if you had a question or your wife had a question, that's how it's supposed to be. And the only thing I'm doing is I'm extending what you're saying and that every other candidate should do the same thing. Because I get around the corner, I don't hear something negative about me, or my sign is pulled out the yard. And really, to be honest, I'm, I'm not vinning, it don't matter. What it is, is that if I don't have to do it, they don't have to do it, because it does not get anywhere. And I even came back and I told Karen Lewis, didn't I tell you? I said, I stopped by Mr. Towns' house, Commissioner Towns, because you are, you on the planning commission. You are a commissioner, you are a official in this town. So I told her, I said, I stopped over there, I said, I hope I didn't offend anybody, I just wanted to say hello, because I don't get to speak to you, because that's the part of the problem in this community. We don't talk to each other. And I agree with you, there was a, a, a one point that it was two sects in this village. Everyone on this side, and you had everyone on this side. And it doesn't have to be like that, and Trustee Lewis would tell you, I said, I hope I didn't say anything, because I, because I seen the sign in the yard, and I said, I don't expect him, because your vote is your right. The problem to come in is that at least I could see and say, Mr. Towns and his wife can vote. What about everybody else who come up to the mic and they have a problem? And you go and look on the voters list, they don't vote. Not only they don't vote, they don't participate in anything, but they demand. And, and, and just to, to, to really sew it up. Pastor Williams made it very clear, you don't vote, you don't have a voice. What was the purpose of Dr. King, and that was before my time? So when people come to me and say, Dr. King did this, okay, well, that was your time, but why you don't vote? So I just wanted to extend to what he has said, because I've experienced it. And I'm saying, I, I didn't have, first of all, there was no reason to talk negative to any of the candidates up here, because they my colleagues. I had none, and then the other people, I don't, you sitting right next to one. I didn't say nothing negative about him either. But I know what you're saying, is that it continues to happen. And, and, and I'll go along with you on that, it can stop, period. And I just wish that at some point in this community, that that continues on, and that we just had a voice to come up here and say it, and that it needs to continue. That you can campaign and not sling mud like you in Cook County. And I yield my time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Towns.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, Deborah, Deborah Stroud? Well, I, I customarily don't do that, because once you've had your comment, you've had your comment, sir. Thank you. Uh, Deborah Stroud, please, I mean Deborah Stroud, please.
Thank you so much for correcting that, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for correcting that, because usually when I'm called Deborah, I would be in trouble as a kid.
Well, I know that, that's...
Thank you.
You know where I got that from, ma'am.
Okay, don't let my eye issue make you think I can't see all of y'all. Because I want to ask, has anybody that is a resident in this community received a sample ballot?
Yes. Yes.
Well, I received a voter reminder, but not a sample ballot. And that's my segue to say, tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday, University Park Library has early voting. Wednesday and Thursday till, uh, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Please do not let not having that sample ballot stop you from early voting. And we all know that election is Tuesday, April 1st. And the other comment about the library, which is exciting to me, on April 2nd, come on to the library annually, we have Cotton Club in a Box. All, some of you have attended it. Well, this year, ladies, put on your long ball gowns, because there's a masquerade ball. We even have the masks at the library. So come on out, men, if you want to put your little bow ties on, you know?
I'd be in Springfield.
Well, the other men, if y'all want to put your little bow ties on. Yeah, but Springfield not going to have a masquerade ball.
I, I, I know, but I, I got to do this on behalf of our residents.
You do your part.
I got to do that.
Residents, we're going to do our part. And it's not limited to residents.
And I like that. I like the Cotton Club. They're great, it's great, it's great entertainment.
It's not limited to residents. If you got a cousin, an auntie, or whoever, uh, don't bring the cat or the dog. But anybody you want to bring, please come and enjoy. This is our first masquerade ball compliments of our library board trustee. So please, 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 I'm going to have on, I got five.
Which library board trustee, if you don't mind me asking?
Pardon me?
Which library board trustee, if you don't mind me asking?
Ms. Thompson.
Oh.
And you don't have to wear a ball gown. You don't have to.
I wear it every day.
Yes, but, but you see...
If you want to, wear it. You don't have to.
I'm emphasizing, because out of my five, one of them fits, and I'm going to have mine on. So, join me, any and everybody, not the males, don't wear no, no gown, but you know what I'm saying? Come on and join us. Let us all enjoy something in this community. It's a Wednesday evening, it's free. Did I mention the word free? It's free. Come on out and enjoy. Thank you all so much. And Manager Scott, for the early voting, may I ask that this can be posted at Village Hall? It gives the location of the library board and Governor State. The hour.
This one is the... It's the cir, it's the, it's the, it's the...
About the early voting and Election Day voting, please do not think that all the candidates are not on the ballot. It depends on what district you're in, which determines if you can vote for the, uh, school board candidates.
Yeah, yes. I'm glad you made that clarity. I want to ask you to make another clarity, because I got accused of removing somebody's name from their ballot on the school board, and I ain't got nothing to do with the school board.
No, sir, this is county. This is county.
Yeah.
Because of the redistricting, the rezoning, um, this is why this occurs. Because somebody did early vote at Governor State and called me immediately and said, how come they're not on the ballot? And, and fortunate, one of the judges called county, and it was explained about the district difference. So please do not think that candidates are not on the ballot. Just depends on where you live in the village.
If I'm not mistaken, the south, the south end of town, we have Mo Brown. The north side of town would be Starr Lawson and Todd, Todd Hall on the ballot. But I don't know which east west street breaks it. I don't know if it's Hickock.
You would have to go on the website, and the county, uh, county has a sample ballots on the website. And that way you can find out which part of University Park can vote for the school board candidates and which part cannot.
Right. So yeah, if you're on the south end of town, we, you won't see their names. I, I, I do know that.
Okay.
Yeah, the south, south, south end is, uh, Mo Brown is, is in two years.
But please, regardless, please go vote. Thank you so much, and I'll be back ready to register April 28th.
So, so Ms. Stroud, let me ask you a question. Can a new resident register and vote?
Yes, sir. On Election Day.
Yes.
With two pieces of ID, one of those have to reflect the address that they are registering from. And it's not limited on Election Day that only University Park residents. They can come from Crete, they can come from Monique.
Can a, can a 17-year-old turning 18, April 5th vote?
No, sir.
Okay.
They have to be 18 before Election Day.
All right, I just, I, I understand, but I just want you to let the general public know that. Also, a convicted felon can vote elsewhere.
In the state of Illinois, yes, sir.
Thank you. As long as they're not incarcerated.
As long as they have served their time.
All right.
In the state of Illinois.
Yeah, because we want to encourage voting, because we want to, some people have these myths, and they don't understand that they got their rights to vote. So we want to make sure, well, I got you.
I'm so glad you asked that, because I have done drives myself purposely.
Yeah.
To try to, uh, explain to a convicted felon that once you have served your time, you are eligible. That's a form of ID to put them back into the main source, in the mainstream.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Much blood, much love to everyone. Thank you. That ends our general public, uh, comments for tonight. We'll start off with reports of our officers. Fire Chief, would go right ahead, please?
Good evening, Mayor trustees. Uh, real quick, the fire department's had 165 calls for service already this year. And within the 165 calls, we did have a hazardous material response out in the industrial park. We did have a pretty large ammonia leak. Uh, it was pretty much wrapped up in a few hours with the hazmat team guys coming out and stopping the leak. Uh, the business is back open and they're back running. The repairs have been made. And then that Saturday, we did have a small, uh, cooking fire over at Governor State, uh, University and the dorms. Um, as we know, we have severe weather that's going to be coming in. We just had a tornado that was in Beecher and in the Steger area. So a quick reminder, please don't run generators inside your homes. Some departments were running calls where people were running generators inside their home. Um, we have started testing for firefighter paramedic through a new testing company. It's done online, which is making the process a lot easier. Our four fire investigators trained with the ATF and also the, uh, Mavis Division and the arson task force on bombs and stuff like that. So that's all I have for you guys.
Hey, Chief, well, since you're not going to say it, I thought that was real great of you guys doing that exercise in this real cold weather when you guys dived down in Pine Lake. So I thought that was really, really good stuff. You know, you're a modest guy, but I just want to commend you guys, because you never know when that, that situation occurs, so. And I actually saw that stuff. I thought I was going to go down there, it looked a little bit too cold for me. So I commend you guys on that, Chief. Chief? Chief Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Board and citizens, for allowing me, uh, to speak tonight. Uh, the police department answered 652 calls for service in January, um, in February, I'm sorry. Um, and including those calls with 31 reported accidents, six verified. We also had six calls of shots fired for only, for three incidents. We're way down, you know, and, uh, many of the, and several of those calls, um, appears to be fireworks, but I thought it was rather apropos to put that out there. So we're way ahead of we, we were from last year and in the year before, so we're trending down. The police department is continuing to liaise with businesses and entities within, uh, the village, including, uh, we worked with last month, we worked with a, a couple of businesses, uh, in, um, fulfilling some of their security, uh, responsibilities, including intrusion testing, where we tried to get into the businesses to make sure that their, uh, security apparatus and their, uh, security protocols were being held, uh, appropriate. We're continuing, you know, grant season upon us. We're continuing to prepare grants in the police department. Uh, we're completing our monthly, uh, state and federal reports, uh, to support these grants. Uh, we're continuing to work with the village manager to, uh, prepare our upcoming budget. Uh, and the police department is continuing our ongoing training to make sure that we meet our state mandated mandates. I know that didn't sound right, but that's, uh, what it is. Um, I did want to talk about, um, the fact that the village is still experiencing, the whole region is still experiencing burglaries, the motor vehicles. Please do not keep any valuables in your cars overnight. There's no reason to leave your wallet, money, firearms, purses, or anything else in your car. Take it in the house. We've had situations where people have left their purse on the dashboard in front of their house overnight. And as you know, that, uh, yeah, you know, you're asking for it. The other thing that's been happening, and this is not an admonishment, oftentimes when we answer these calls, we get there and we're taking a report. Other people want to come out of neighbors' houses, and they want to talk about and commiserate how they saw the young men or the young women walking down the street, but they didn't say anything. It does not do your neighbor, who has been the victim of a crime, any good to tell them or tell us afterwards, yeah, I saw them. You see something suspicious, give us a call, all right? It doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt. There's nothing more important than for the police department to respond to your, uh, to your concerns. If it turns out that they're not involved, we're not going to put them on the ground and give them a rubber hose, anything like that. We're just going to make contact and find out what's going on. Oftentimes, us merely showing up and addressing these young folks out there may prevent them from committing a crime. So we want to make sure that we're, um, that we're doing that. So please, if you see anything that looks suspicious, give us a call. You know, it doesn't cost any more or any less to your taxes to do that. Also, um, right now, uh, everybody is buying stuff from Amazon. If you are able to, try to schedule your package deliveries from Amazon or any other deliveries to a time where a family member or a friend is either at home or a neighbor, all right? Uh, too often, we found that some of these packages that have been stolen from the front porch of the house, they get the, uh, somebody goes, I want next day, um, delivery, right? So it gets there between, uh, uh, four and eight in the morning, but you left for work at seven in the morning, and so your package has been sitting out there all day till you get home about six or seven o'clock at night. Try to, uh, try to be smart about scheduling your packages to make sure that they, um, that they, uh, show up. Uh, the police department also, I, I was honored to represent University Park and the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police at Lobby Day at, um, Springfield, uh, this past week. Uh, we spoke with a lot of legislature legislators, including Speaker Welch, uh, President Harmon, and other, uh, state legislators about, uh, issues and, uh, bills that have been filed this year that have direct impact on the village of University Park. And so we want to make sure that we liaise with them and gave them our view about these matters to, um, to keep our village safe. Uh, lastly, unfortunately, I, I, you know, I hate saying this, we've had a couple of, um, village, um, citizens that have unfortunately passed away in a, in a, in a very sad way. Um, there's a crisis hotline, 988. It's up and functional. It's for the whole state of Illinois. You will find in every village building, uh, I haven't put it up in here, there's going to, there's a poster that's, uh, going to be put up in every village building that talks about 988. It's a crisis hotline. It's staffed 24 hours a day. It's staffed by the state. It will get you help. There is nothing, we have some flyers in the back on the table back there, we want to help you. You know, uh, I'm not going to say nothing is that bad, but if you feel that bad, please dial 988. And not just for yourself, but dial, uh, dial it for a loved one, a neighbor, a friend, or anybody that you may, um, that you may suspect are having those type of situ, uh, those type of thoughts. Uh, lastly, we're going to ask you to slow down driving, look all, look always when traversing intersections. And remember, no parking between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. We have been getting complaints from citizens saying that they've been getting these tickets.
Then you got to get them. Giving them tickets.
Yeah, we giving them the ticket. So, you know, it's not going to, unfortunately, it's not going to be any mercy. Um, and just reminding everybody, we got Cop on Top coming in 2025. The date will be posted. The law enforcement torch run to support Special Olympics, the date will be posted. Uh, the monthly chat with the chief, again, I'll be here this Thursday, uh, at, here at 90 Town Center from 5:30 to 7:00 o'clock. You want to come out and just talk, you come out and talk. There's no real agenda beyond you get to ask me unfiltered questions about anything dealing with law enforcement in University Park. National Night Out in 2025, that date will be posted. And then, of course, you know, Shop on Top, Shop with a Cop in December 2025. So look out for those dates. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that ends my report.
Uh, Chief, I do want to ask you one question. I know that the board would agree with me, and I... I know that the board would agree with me, and I, we have a grave concern, and I know we, and the manager and all of us have discussed this. We really need to look at getting lights on the Western and Exchange Avenue, and I understand that we don't control that, so there will be some shared revenue. I could care less about the revenue, but it's the safety of that corner that concerns me. There was almost a bad accident yesterday. So, i- i- it's really, really bad. So I guess you and, I would ask you and the manager to look into that, please, because spring is fastly approaching, everybody's out in their nice cars, and everybody likes to go a little faster than they should.
So, until we're able to, to, myself and the manager have been talking about it, and until we're able to come up with that type of mechanism, we have adjusted our patrol schedules to take that into account, to keep an eye on people driving right there at Western and University Parkway, because we're trying to save lives. And that goes back with, please, everyone, within the earshot of my voice, slow down. Okay? You may think you're getting there in a hurry, you may think you're getting there faster, but you're going to be late if, you're going to be late if you have an accident. So, so slow down, take your time.
And one last thing, and I don't, I hope Trustee Lewis don't get upset about this, but she was asking me, would you consider doing an anonymous tip line for the residents, so they can feel comfortable in calling in?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, trustee.
Mayor.
Go ahead, trustee.
We, remember we voted for Will County is going to replace those lights. And then, if we're going to have, we're going to add the cameras, we already said it.
But that...
Right? We already...
Yeah, but that's, go ahead, trustee Brooks.
Yeah, we, we spoke about red light cameras at one point, remember?
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
But I haven't, you know, we haven't heard anything since, so. We just want to stay on top of things, because you was out of accident with me when, when there was fatalities?
That, that crossed us out there right now.
Yeah, yeah. And the other people who, well, it's a bad corner, let's try to make sure it's a safer corner. All right, Chris, Mr. Mayor Bailey? We saving the lady for last today, huh?
So, we've been working on the finance side and working through audit requests. We've been working through various audit requests, processing payroll, various union items, we're starting working through the budget for '26. We submitted seventeen through twenty TIF reports. Those have all been closed out with the state, so those are done. Yay.
Yes, indeed.
I do have in front of everyone the investments that the village has made with its cash balances. From July, the village has made almost $1.3 million. Just in February, we've had $150,000. Financials-wise, you guys, I did send out the financials earlier this month. For, just for the general fund, the village has a positive $6.5 million, compared to last year's $2.2 million.
Say that one more time, I guess I'll make sure I heard you right.
So, we've made, the village has made $6,527,726.60 compared to last year's And I'll leave it on that.
All right. Manager Scott. Thank you so much, Chris. You know, it's always a pleasure to see you, because it appears that you always have great, positive news for us, so thank you.
Good evening, mayor, board, most importantly, the residents. This is human resources report for the month of March. Leslie's been working on staffing and recruiting, interviewed one finance director, one executive assistant, three Public Works employees, one human resources professional. She has an upcoming meeting next week with, to interview another human resources professional, as well as one more person in Public Works. And we filled a golf course position as well and interviewed. For 2025, workman's comp surgery and other outstanding workman's comp items, and IDHR, one pending, and four labor relations, three grievances, and a MOU with the IAFF and the MOU for the police department. She's also been assisting with some issues with FMLA, employee relations, as well as the employee policy and procedure manual handbook that's completed now. Also, I wanted to read Chris Vargas's report. Public Works summary for the month of March 2025. Public Works has begun preparing and are currently working on tools and machinery for the upcoming spring season. They're also actively reviewing employment applications and have begun patching throughout the village. Chris met with Mead Electric regarding the installation of three light poles on University Parkway in front of GovState and Metro East that were successfully installed. He met with Solitude Lake Management for the seasonal fountain install, and also Amber Mechanical regarding RTU's installation for Unit 44 and 22 that were successfully installed, as well as the planning for RTU's installation at the golf course. He also met with Will County Well and Pump regarding the new filtration system that's scheduled to be installed soon at the golf course, and met with dependable fire equipment regarding the kitchen fire suppression system inspection. Also attended a virtual training session on bridge deck ceiling and thin overlays, and also met with the Midwest Fence regarding guardrail repair off of I-57 that has been repaired. For PSA, branch removal season is scheduled to begin on Monday, April 7th. Branches will be picked up every Monday. Public Works is not responsible for the removal of any contractor work. For additional information, please see our flyer or contact Public Works at 708-534-4823. And my report. I'm just going to pick out some things out of the report. So tariffs are beginning to take effect, they're starting to hit us. I did already have one meeting today regarding the snowplows, which were passed in on this last budget. They are going up. I'm working to try to negotiate the price, so it won't go up so much. So I did get that notification today. The Teamsters, Leslie and I discussed and worked out the parameters of the sign-on bonus for the officers. We have not been able to retain officers because of the fact that the, the pay, the, the starting wage is too low. And looking at other communities and having discussions with some other city managers, I, I submitted to the Teamsters and they approved increasing it to $20,000. That is what they're going to be getting, all the new onboarding police officers. That would entail them staying on for four years. They receive that as a sign-on bonus. If they do decide that they want to leave early, it will be prorated. So all that documentation is ready. We have some new officers coming on, and they'll be presented at next month's board meeting, so we're really excited about the new officers coming on board. Held a meeting a few weeks ago with the developer regarding a pilot program for accessible veteran housing that they are interested in doing in University Park, because they've heard about a lot of the movement going on. And we received some calls with some people that want to work with us in another community to do this pilot program for veterans. The village held their TOD, Special Financing District Study. This was on the 28th of February. Although this is a March report, I thought it was really important to discuss it, because the, the team met, I thought it was extremely informative. It was a really, really good meeting about the different financing mechanisms, and that was on the 28th, that was after my board report. But I wanted to say that, because I really, I did learn a lot in that. You always think you know everything, but I learned a lot of things that I didn't, that I didn't even know about some of the financing mechanisms, so it was great. Meeting with SSMMA and other mayors and managers regarding legislative updates. I did provide that page with the legislative updates to the board, so you can read. They're still evolving, but just so you're aware of what was going on in the meeting, it's a couple pages, so I didn't want to run through it now. Also, met with Chris Vargas, Niva, Chief Seganga. I had already received the police chief's fiscal year 26 budgets. Chris Mirabali and I are working to finalize the budget items for the department heads for next week. On March 4th, I attended a meeting with Chris Mirabali, the fire union, and Leslie to discuss various grievances. And also met with the village administrator from Cal Park, Mayor Curry of Linwood, the mayor and her assistant, Mayor Rudes, to discuss the partnership and joint recruitment of businesses for upcoming ICSC conference in May. Mayor Rudes and I met with a broker and a developer that are going into contract to purchase applied systems. And we discussed possible partnership with GovState and the village to do some possible initiatives in that building. On March 6th, I held an economic development meeting with the entire staff from Code Enforcement and Tero Engineering, Mayor Rudes, to update everyone on the over twenty projects and their various stages, so we could all be on board with the next steps for each project, since there are so many. Held a meeting with a new member of the golf course that Leslie discussed in her board report, went over operations expectations, including the revenue expectations that I have for this coming season. On March 19th, I met with two different parties interested in running the golf course. And at the same time that day, met with Amber Mechanical along with Chris Vargas to discuss the HVAC system, the zones, because there's so many zones, and how we're going to condense that, which is currently not working. Agenda prep, meeting with the clerk, Attorney Frazier, and the mayor occurred on March 19th. And I also met with the Illinois City Managers Association and other managers to exchange ideas, programs, and policies, because all those heads are better than one. Also, on March 19th, I met with Serve Pro, who is still do, I'm still dealing with the ongoing remediation in the basement of the firehouse. Had a Zoom meeting last week Friday with the consultant firm that was hired by Will County that administered that ARPA-Will County grant. Due to the issues that we were having with Aqua, Will County does not want to go with that same grant that I applied for. So, so I submitted the capital bill request to SSMMA for Springfield, and this all kind of segues into the same thing. So I submitted an ask in Springfield for $132,450,000, go big or go home. From the list, I reviewed other projects, so that we can replace that ARPA project. And I'm proposing, because it's only a half a million dollars, so to get the biggest bang for our buck, I am going to try to apply to do village-wide striping throughout the village, as much as we can get done, which will be quite a bit. Also, the driveway for Fire Station One, which is in need of desperate repair, as well as the demo of Hickok Pool. So I'm trying now to get some figures, so I can see if all those three things that we really need, if that can fit into the half a million dollar criteria. Also, I wanted to just kind of recap the snow removal program, because obviously, the community really, really appreciated and they utilized it. So we had seventy-eight people in the community that utilized the snow removal programs that were veterans, disabled, and seniors. For the water relief program, there were a total of eighty-one residents that we were able to assist. There were forty-five shut-offs, there were thirty-six past dues. We did receive thirty-five bills that were not past due, so I did turn those away, because I thought it was important that we give that money to people who really needed that money, whose water was shut off and past due. And we received nineteen incomplete, either they didn't have the bill that matched the address. You know, sometimes people will not really be living there, so there were some, there were nineteen of those. But that's the end of my report, thank you.
You sure you didn't leave anything out? All right. Trustee Brooks.
Good evening. Good eve, good, good evening, everyone. Get the words out. My report just basically, I had the opportunity to speak with the village manager and actually just finished a conversation with the chief. It was actually a multiple, multiple of things. I do need to schedule appointment with the village managers. We have a lot of properties that are, definitely, I want to say, we have some slum lords. And the residents would like to take some type of action, so I'll get a chance to meet with the village manager when the schedule open up. But also, two, number two is crime. I won't name the location, but I did tell the, the, the chief. But we cannot have residents living in buildings and they are living in fear. That is unacceptable, that is not the University Park that I remember. And the chief is experienced when it comes down to dealing with crime inside residential buildings. And I'm speaking with more than one floor with drug activity, and the chief will be taking certain measures. So if you see a higher visibility, I would just like to thank the police department and the chief ahead of time on the discussion we had. Other than that, I just encourage everyone, please, do not sit back at home on April 1st, or even before April 1st. And if something don't go your way, because I'm going to be honest, I'll be okay. But what I don't like is when people come to the door and say, "You know, I didn't like how this election go, or why this person is up there," and so on and so on. Let me say this. We have people a generation before me, and I listened to how my grandmother and grandfather spoke about when it was time to go to the polls, they had to carry a .38 to make sure that someone don't break them or hit them in the head. I want you to think about that time, it was no more than fifty years ago. And so what I'm saying to you is, is that this community has so much potential. The problem that comes in, residents, we have to participate in order for things to happen. That includes going to the polls and voting. At this point, really, to be honest, this is not, it's not about hate anymore. I don't see, and I'm going to be honest, and I think I said it last board meeting, this is probably the most get-along board I've been on in my eight years. We don't dispute with each other. Actually, even when I was just up here, I was just doing, y'all didn't even pay attention. It was me, two trustees, no, yeah, myself, the lawyer. We trying to do things that are positive for this village just that quick, to try to keep this village moving. And so, I say this because the soul of the village is always in your hands. You just entrust it for us to make sure it go the right way and be the voice for you. So, I leave it at that, and may, I, my colleagues, good luck to everyone who is running, and please exercise that vote to vote, because there are a lot of people who are your color, black and brown, who bled for that right to vote. And we cannot let these opportunities go by, whether it's local or national. Because just today, I got nervous when someone mentioned someone taking over Social Security. You better believe people what they say when they campaigning, that's all I have to say. The man told you what he was going to do. He's doing it. So, I yield my time, Mr. Mayor, I think that'll soak it in.
Thank you so much. You know what, I'm sorry, I admitted someone. Ms. Sanders, you want to address somebody real quick? I'm sorry, I apologize.
Good evening.
You can pick the mic up, you don't have to bend over. Yeah, everybody bending over.
Good evening, board and Mr. Mayor. I wanted to come before you guys, because I thought it was really, really important to tell you about the magnificent job that I believe this village has done. Before I speak, I want to talk about South Holland. South Holland had a similar water crisis, and I looked at what they were going through as far as their remediation process. And one of them is to obviously have the pipes replaced under, under individuals' homes, in individuals' homes. So, and I kind of copied off of some of the things that they were doing as far as what we could do to stir up our residents, to make sure that they signed up for the TAP program. So, I want to just give kudos to village manager Scott, mayor, for the exceptional work that they did in executing those signs, because I thought it was very important, even though I think we get a little flack for it being so large, but it was very important. My background is in PR, and I think you cannot over-communicate in a situation like this, and I think it really helped. I want to give you some statistics. We talked, I want to commend trustee Gina Williams, who worked hand-in-hand with me along with trustee Williams, specifically on the... Trustee, oh, and I always do this to you, right? Trustee Lewis, I am so sorry, I do it consistently, so forgive me. But trustee Williams... But trustee Williams, she really was hand-in-hand with me on the phone with the EPA, oh my God, just talking to them, and really expressing how very important it was to us that our village gets what we deserve as far as them coming out, taking our applications. I will tell you, it is a process. I mean, it's a process, and it's been a fight to the end, getting our residents registered. So take, like, right now, we have about a hundred and seventy-eight residents who signed up, but the problem is, there's some missing information, and they're having problems reaching out to residents. So what I want to encourage residents, some have reached back out to me, they've reached back out to Village Hall. If you have not been contacted by TAP, it is just essential that you make sure that you reach back to either us and/or to Roble specifically. I'd like for you to reach back out to us. We processed about three hundred and seventy-five applications in the mayor's office on and before March seventh, so kudos to all of you guys for making that possible, where people came into the Village Hall. Trustee Lewis and I, up until, what, was it eleven fifty-two?
Eleven fifty-two, fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. We were in the office processing, making sure that the items were scanned, sent, and I received confirmation from Roble and the EPA about our, the ones that we scanned and submitted to them. So I think we did a great, Mayor, your PSA was exceptional. Many people came to the office and said, can you help us? Can you help us? And we did help. So I'm grateful to the community for their participation in the process, and I want us not to miss out. I think on the ninth, seven, eight, nine, tenth, we had several people to come to the Village Hall, and of course, the deadline was March seventh. The only thing I can say is that we are working with the EPA, and they are really being diligent with us as far as anybody who attempted to send mail, they're working with me to make sure that that mail is not being rejected, the application is not being rejected, as long as they made the effort to, to send, submit the application. But total, we are at six hundred, and, I'm sorry, seven hundred residents signed up. As I said, a hundred and seventy-eight residents unfortunately have, how do I say it? Their forms are incomplete. So if you're hearing this message, residents, please forward your email to Roble, forward a second number. They're telling me lots of people have numbers that are not, they're not answering, their voicemails are filled, because they are indeed making appointments, and your residents are really happy, because truly, they are getting responses from TAP. So you guys did an amazing job, and I just wanted to report that to you. Thank you.
Ms. Sanders. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Sanders, how many people were approved?
I can't say approved at this point, because approved
To date, to date.
But even approval is relative to their acceptance of the application. So acceptance and then them getting a subsequent appointment.
Okay.
So that's, and actually, I will know, because I copied myself on the applications that I submitted, so I'm getting responses, at least that ones who's application is completed correctly, and they, and they are too, they are getting acceptance as well.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Trustee Faucher.
Good evening, residents, Board, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you all for attending those. As out in the audience, I do see some new faces, so thank you all for coming. I hope to see more. I wanted to also encourage you all to make sure you get out and vote. It's important to vote, and it's not just for, I understand it's usually during the off-season, as they say, the off-election time period, when you're not voting for the president, the presidential election, a lot of people don't go vote. So my encouragement is to go out, and I don't care if you vote for one person, the library board, the township people, get out there and vote, because we need to make sure we increase our percentages here in University Park, because our percentages are very low when it comes to voting. I encourage all those that are out there to try to, the residents, to look into the candidates, to make sure you pick the right candidate that best reflects you and what you're looking for in your community, and how it affects you in your household, and then for any of those candidates that's out there, I wish you all luck. I'm looking forward to working with whoever on the board. Also, I just wanted to talk about, I wasn't here at the last board meeting, regular board meeting, but I'm in the process of working with the village manager to work on some summer programs for the youth, the seniors, and everybody. So several things that I came and talked about, I have to say different things, as for skating parties, bowling, a lot of different things that's gonna be out there for all the residents, seniors, the kids. So if you all have any ideas that you want to present, you could reach out to me, send me an email to village manager or so, but we are, I am working on a whole summer program, just so we can have something to do out there for our youth. And it's not, it's not like we're gonna have to pay for a lot of this stuff, because we're gonna hope to get the support from industrial park, the industrial park companies, and also just what we have here in our funds, as we hear that we have a surplus. This is some of the money that was out in the budget for our Parks and Recs Department, as to say, that we could be using to bring different things to our community and make sure we have stuff out here for us to do. So, want to thank you all, thank you all, have a good night.
Good night. Thank you so much, trustee. Trustee McFadden.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry that I was a little late, I wasn't feeling well, but I made sure I made it in. I just wanted to let you guys know about Faith Movers Church has a Bible study every Wednesday night at seven-thirty PM, and we also have, they also have the food giveaway on Saturday mornings at ten AM. Come by, you can get your food and supplies that you need for the house. So Saturday, ten AM, and Wednesday nights at seven-thirty PM. Thanks.
All right, well, thank you. Trustee Thompson.
I thought we were going in alphabetical order. Okay. Good evening, neighbors, staff, Board, and Mayor. Happy spring, everybody. Election Day is upon us, as you can see by all the signs, but please don't vote because of the number of signs you see. Vote according to the candidate's record and decide based on what they say. You can later on hold them accountable for their words. To be a trustee is not easy. Sometimes we have to make hard decisions. As for me, I'm trying my best to make decisions based on what's reasonable, and as much as possible, make decisions that do not make life harder or more expensive for us as residents. As a nurse, I was taught several principles we can all live by, even trustees and people who want to be trustees. One is accountability. We all need to be accountable for whatever we do. The second is non-malfeasance, that is to avoid causing harm or additional expenses to people. Fidelity, which means to be loyal and to keep promises, so you can keep trust with the ones you are serving. Beneficence, which is acting in the best interest of the ones you are serving and promoting their well-being. Justice, ensuring fairness in our dealings with others for the benefit of all. And then finally, veracity, the obligation to tell the truth. Be transparent and provide accurate information. Vote wisely, because as we are seeing more and more, elections have serious and dire consequences. Remember to vote, yes, for the tax referendum, which is on the back of your ballot. And then also, I have a short notice opportunity for a chance at a scholarship from Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, and the deadline, sorry, is March thirty-first. I've given the village manager the notice, and she has all the information. Please don't give up on University Park. Get involved, ask the hard questions of your elected officials. Thank you for listening, and have a great rest of the week.
Oh, awesome. Thank you so much, trustee Thompson. Let me see. Trustee Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say, Kim is gone now, but I wanted to give her extra applause for everything she was doing. Like she said, me and her, also Lewis, but we worked tirelessly. She and I was every day with the EPA. We were constantly talking to Barbara Libra. We were constantly talking with even Aqua representatives, whoever it took to get the job done, we were trying to make sure. And I appreciate the signs that did go up, even though they went up late, but with those signs, we did get a surge of people applying. I was getting calls from Marva Hampton every day, talking with residents who wanted to speak with me, wanting to know how to complete the application. Yes, we have, the applications have, are being processed, there are some problems, and we don't know how many people are getting approved. This program really runs to July twenty-seventh as far as the testing. So the deadline was March seventh, but testing will be going on through till July twenty-seventh. And know this, even if you got two times that came out and said you weren't compliant, you can still have them come out again. Our goal is to make sure people's pipes get replaced. So if you get a letter saying you were denied, please hold on to it, because we may have to go into another legal battle with Aqua. It's not over. We're gonna keep on fighting. We're not gonna sit here and just complain and say, oh, well, that TAP program wasn't nothing. No, it was a start in the direction. If you don't take a step forward, you're not going anywhere. So yes, we did contact people, we did notify people of TAP. We hope that some people are getting their pipes replaced. If they're not, we're gonna still go to court, do whatever we have to do to battle, to make sure that the water is fresh and clean for the children as well for our households. Also, this month, I do want to thank everybody. It is Women's History Month, and as Ms. Boyd pointed out, she's looking for the Sojourner Truth to Heritage Movement. Well, I was Angela Davis in high school and at Blue Cross Blue Shield. I made sure that our members were taken care of. I didn't sit idly. When I come in here, I'm not a rubber stamp. I vote for what I believe in. If I don't question it, maybe it's because I've already done the research. I talked to past managers and chiefs of police that helped me with these agenda items. So when I come to the table, I know what I'm getting ready to do. I'm not gonna just aye, 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 if I don't believe in it. But if I agree with it, you'll notice the majority of the time, we all are voting aye. It's occasion that one might say no, but the majority of time, we are in agreement. And I hope that we can continue to work together, because our community does need unity. I'm tired of the mudslinging, the lies that have been dispelled, even with me with TAP, oh, she sold us, get out of here. Get out of here. I thank God for Jesus, because he knows where I stand and what I did. So they can say what they want, but I know the higher call, he knows what I did and what I'm doing. And that's why I push for the water relief programs and other programs to keep people's water on, to make sure that their water is clean, and we're gonna continue to get programs together. And like Ms. Faucher, trustee Faucher was saying, I too am working on a senior program. I know somebody in Richardson Park that's over the senior programs over there, and she's already putting together chair exercises, pottery classes, and I need five, six, seven people to join that committee so we can make it happen. We will take trips to Freedom Hall. We will go to Governor's State University. We're not gonna sit here and be idle forever. Whether we have the park district up and running yet, Gina Williams, trustee Williams is gonna make sure that we get things underway. I'm not gonna be one of these people, just sit here, talk a good game, but don't do anything. I'm about my father's business. So I'm letting you know. And let me tell you, I raised five beautiful daughters and two nephews. All of my daughters are educated, professional. My youngest baby just became the senior manager for Garrett's Popcorn. She's the senior operating manager. So I made sure that even though I was a widow at thirty-four, I continued to make sure that they stayed in school and did what they needed to do. And I want to salute all the black women in our country, in our nation, and in this room, because I think we're all doing a phenomenal job. And that's the end of my report.
Now, trustee Williams, I just want to say something about that. I concur.
She helped me to make sure I filled out my application, so I called her a couple times.
Yes, that's right. Well, that's good, and
She was saying that.
And I can agree with her daughters, because most of her daughters all went to school with our children, and they have a fine family, absolutely.
Yes.
All right. Looks like that's it, except for we gotta go to trustee Lewis. Go right ahead.
I'm always bringing up the rear. It's okay, I've done that in state and put us in one. Okay. I want to say thank you to, happy Women's Month, everyone. I also want to say thank you to Kim Saunders, because we, we were, we were running and rolling. I also went to doors, passing out applications for the TAP program, gave it to HOA people. She was rocking and rolling. We were in that office, and I was giving her stacks and stacks of, of applications that she was putting in, and we were in there eleven fifty-two, fifty-seven. And she was getting down to make sure. And like as Gina had said, for those who were denied, please come back and talk to, what was her name, Barbara?
Libra.
Libra. And she was talking to us, telling us to tell them to call her for further information if they were denied. I also want to say, I did attend the TOD study with manager Scott and the mayor and Gina and myself, and there were some things that they were leaving out about University Park that I brought to their attention, as far as when the traffic jams at the Metro train station, we need a right-hand turn lane for those who are moving into trying to catch the Metro train, because everybody runs in the middle, which I told the chief, don't give us no ticket. We all ride the middle lane trying to catch our, trying to catch our train at a certain particular time when the freight train comes through. And they were talking, they didn't remember that we asked for that at the east lot to have a right-turning lane, so that was some things we brought up. And also, they were talking about some things about taking away our metro parking spaces, and I told them that we weren't giving up the spaces. We talked about that when Ms. E was here, that we're not giving up any spaces at the Metro train lot. So those are things that they had left out of the report that we had talked about. So that TOD study was good. I want to say to all the candidates that's running, good luck to everybody. That's the end of my report.
All right, well, thank you so much. So I'm gonna take a few little extra minutes tonight to address a couple of things, because I usually just in and out, but I'm, I'm gonna speak on a couple of things, some very informative stuff, first of all. We're gonna talk about House Bill three eight oh eight. Representative Slaughter, this is a property tax circuit breaker, and the purpose of this bill, it creates the Circuit Breaker Property Tax Relief Act, provides that an individual who is domiciled in this state is eligible for and receives either the general homestead exemption, the general alternative homestead exemption, has experienced property bill tax spikes, and has an income that meets a specific income eligibility limitation, is eligible for a grant of a portion of their bill spike, provides that the maximum amount of the grant to which a claimant is entitled is the one-half of the claimant's tax bill spike, creates the Circuit Breaker Property Tax Relief Fund for the purpose of making grants to claimants, amends the State Finance Act, and also to make conforming changes effective immediately. That will be going out, will be testifying on the twentieth of March twenty, twenty twenty-five. So that's a House bill that you guys can follow, because everybody's concerned about property tax relief, so we're hoping that Representative Slaughter passes, and we could all use a little relief. And I want to talk about our, our country. So what's really important, I just came back from Washington, and the climate in Washington is extremely different, but it's important that we're in the room. You know, I heard in the forum, my trustee over there said, well, I didn't bring nothing back. But the thing is that I'm, the thing, the thing is that I'm in the room, and if you're not in the room And if you're not in the room, you can't bring anything back. So, it's important that we start at this process. We all agree what our problem is with Aqua. We can't continue to harp on what the problem is. We all must have our collective minds and work together toward getting a new water source. The best thing that we can do is ensure that the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency and us, the Village of University Park, hold them to the highest level of accountability, ensuring what they're delivering to us now meets the standard as it is. So, we know the problem. We're not happy with the predatory company at all whatsoever. But to continue to harp on this, that, that, another, that's not a solution. We're about resolutions, okay? So, I just want to put that out there for our residents. And don't you think for one minute that we're not advocating and working toward that source. And I heard trustee Brooks say, yeah, about it could potentially mix into the different infrastructure and things at the first back of the form. Well, it could if that was the process. But the $132 million process will bring in our own infrastructure and those will lie dormant in the ground and we wouldn't have any use of it. But, so, and for those who don't know, when a municipality has full control over their water, it brings in just about as much revenue as the annual city budget. So, that should be our goal. And with the potential this third, not the potential, with the third airport probably starting construction in the next 24 months, it's vitally important that we continuously stay the course till we can ensure that we have control of our own destination. I might not be here for a long time and neither the board members, but I'm quite sure that we want to plant the seed for the next generation to have hope. People like Mrs. Boyd's daughter and, and Mrs. Sorrell's daughter and our younger generation and trustee Faucher's daughter and Gina's daughters and our grandkids, those are the people who have the opportunity to receive this village in a really good standing. It was planned for $120,000. But I found out something that was really good and I think we could all use this as an economic tool. The law allows us to claim our daytime population to our actual numbers. So, our daytime population just alone in industrial park exceeds a little over 10,000, combined with our 7,500 resident, 8,000 residents because we got a couple of pregnant ladies out there and they'll have babies soon. Also, the campus at Government State, those are permanent residents as well. So, we gotta start using things to our advantage to get the things that we need. Everybody up here, whether you support me, whether you don't support me, want to ensure that we circulate our dollars one good time, eight good times before we leave out this community. I think we all agree, we need grocery stores, we need dry cleaners, we need amenities that we seek outside of our community. So, when we bind together with one common vision and one goal, which is to have a safe, aesthetic, clean village, I think we can accomplish those things. So, I wanted to say those things. And I just want to read this little something that I think is important because everyone talks about election. I've been in a lot of the University Park elections. I've been in the 2005 election when I first got on the board, 2007, 2009, 2011, 2013, 2015, 2017, 2019, and 2023. It is a challenge. I've been challenged, I've been scrubbed, up and down. But what's important right now is that the residents aren't deceived, aren't misled. When the people come to your door, ask for a resume. Because the trustee's job is only about legislation. It's not a leadership role. The mayor's the leadership role. Whoever sits in the mayor's seat after me is the leader in the leadership role. Understand that. The trustee is a single vote and they have their own opinions on things. So, it's a legislative role. And in reality, the people won't get it all mixed up because it's time for us to straighten it out now. The trustee's job is to look at some of these old ordinances and bring them up to date. Get away from the Flintstones and get into the Jetsons. We got ordinances on the books since '73 and we still operating on them. And it doesn't make any sense. To pass positive legislation is what the obligation is. Not micromanaged, not day-to-day, not the finance. We put people and hire folks for those things. So, when we know what we actually doing, then we do an even better job. I've been there as a legislator. I'm in a different role, in the leadership role now. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve. And I will serve the residents of this community till my dying days with the best that I possibly can because God has promised this for our people. And people say that everybody controls the election, but you gotta understand this. The will of the Lord will always be done. And everybody understand, what's for you, you will not be denied. Whatever desires of your heart, if it lines up with the will of the Lord, then that shall it be. So, and if people want to understand about, "How can you help your mayor?" I think I'm doing pretty good, to be honest with you. We've done a whole lot of work. Ask the mayor who's helping me the most. Ask him who we can depend on to call in for a meeting, to step in. Trustee Williams, thank you for stepping into that meeting for me out the clear blue sky. And trustee Brooks, I gotta commend you because you made me think about something at the forum. Because we have to give our acknowledgements and our flowers while people are alive. You said a special thanks to trustee Thompson and a special thanks to trustee Faucher because those have been your running mates and they have worked diligently with you. What I learned from that, because I have to do the same thing. Thank you, trustee. Thank you so much. Because I want to thank trustee Williams for understanding the vision and working with me and being a voice. Thank you so much for your unwavering support. Trustee Karen Lewis, I want to say the same thing to you. I thank you for your support and your unwavering support and your understanding. I thank you, trustee McFadden, the same way because you guys do ask the questions. People don't understand because you come up here and cast a vote because you do your homework, you do your research. I get the questions all the time because the mayor sets the agenda. So, they say, "Ask the mayor." Trustee Faucher calls every now and then and has some questions. But that's the way we do things. And what Gina said is absolutely true. She does the research. She does the homework. And it's come, so when we come to this collective table, we should all, I encourage everyone to do the same thing. Then we look more professional. We are more professional and we give back to the constituents what they want. Good, clean government. With that, I'm asking for a motion to go into an executive session for, for the purpose of litigation will be out. So, people that are here for the first time, executive session is only when the mayor and the board of trustees have to convene. The general public has to leave. And we'll have to come back in an open session, hopefully, for a few minutes. But thank you so much for your participation and your attendance. And it is time for us to have unity in our community. Thank you. Can I have a motion go into executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. You got about five minutes. You guys get on out. We should be out in a few.